These are the rules in case you haven't heard. Each candidate will have three minutes for an opening statement.
Sure.
Questions will be limited to one minute with responses at two minutes. We have a timekeeper, this is our timekeeper, so we'll let everybody know.
I'll hold up my finger for one minute and I will say stop for three minutes.
Candidates will be given two rebuttal cards. That's in case you have a problem with something that's brought up and you can rebut that. And then candidates will be given a 30-second rebuttal time if their opponent refers to them in their responses. You don't have to use rebuttal card, but if your opponent uses your name and says something about you, you'll automatically get 30 seconds. Candidates will then be given three minutes for a closing statement. We have three questions that were provided to the candidates ahead of time. And then after we do those, we'll open up a couple from the floor and then some if it will bring across. So we're going to start. Who's opening up? Floyd opening up. You're opening up for three minutes.
We start.
That's what you guys flipped on, right?
Thank everyone for being here tonight. Most of you know me, but ones that don't, Floyd Jackson, I was your past mayor out here for six terms. And qualifications, I'm going to come back into the city as a councilman and run my merits and my accomplishments while I was in office. I was six-term mayor, two-term councilman. I completed all of school, proved what was required. I've lived out here for 31 years, raised four children, two both of mine and my grandchildren have been living out here now. I worked very well for the commissioners, the JP, the judge, the outside agencies, the tax doc, FEMA, emergency management, SERC, had schools in here. I worked on the JP and the judges and commissioners campaigns for them. I understand the budgets that we're dealing with and I've written six of them, so I understand quite well. I have knowledge and I've written several ordinances out here, House of Court ordinance being one of them. And I know Roman Forest, the knowledge, but I have the knowledge of it to pass, the way it used to be, things that were done, things that people were out here and I know how it's going right now. And like I said, I have raised my family here. I want to get back in here, there are things that I know I can do, I know I can help, I can get the link, open that up again where we have communications with our commissioners, communications with county judge, doctor on a regular basis and just open things up and I know that I can work with my merit. Thank you.
I'd like to provide also, if you don't know me, my name is Conley Wallace. I am currently a city councilman, position five. Ladies and wife of 41 years have lived here, built her home here and we raised our children here and our parenting children have grown up here. To tell you a little bit about me, I have followed in the footsteps of my father in the steel foundry industry. I gained 40 years of experience. The last 25 years, I have been a manager in our plant. In 2010, I was asked to run for city council, which I did and I was elected. I started seeing discrepancies, what disturbed me greatly. So I brought this to the attention of myself, council people. And, you know, it brought many questions of some of our senior officials. We determined financial information being given to council was sometimes false. So the council hired a professional licensed auditing firm to come in and audit our books. You know, we had to do this to find out when the city stood firmly on its finances to take care of the needs of our city. We didn't know.
One minute.
There has to be transparency so that we know our tax dollars are being spent wisely. We have accomplished many things since I have been in office due to the hard work of the council I serve with. Just three minutes, one minute left. I can't tell you all the changes that's happened within the last two years. I left the chair up here, you can look at it. So I will close now, but these are the things that we're looking at right now and this city infrastructure is very strong at this point. Thank you.
Okay Floyd opening up, so I'll go to you for the first question. First question, please were given to the candidates ahead of time so they already know what the questions are going to be. Candidates quite often talk about any issues with the city, but don't always hear the solutions to these issues. What are the two most important issues you wish to address if you're elected or elected to the city council and what are your solutions to these issues?
The biggest issue right now, as I hear from the citizens, is the problem of King's Colony. The problem is armed, drugs, guns, loud music. Short-term, long-term solutions. Number one, establish a joint task force between the sheriff's department and constable to seek support and Roman Forest Police Department. Number two, hire dedicated officers to run drug interdiction to intercept money from the drug dealers. A, drug money seized then can be used to alleviate the delays with the department's budget given us, the ability to harm law enforcement to further attack the problem and bring the fight to King's Colony instead of waiting for them to bring it to us.
One minute.
Long-term, we need to annex King's Colony. Doing this will allow greater control of the development, availability, enforcing code and ordinances. Bond, grants, infrastructure.
That's the next one.
I also have a problem with King's Colony and for y'all that remember, for those of y'all that don't, here was a petition that I wrote, here's the signatures on these petitions that were passed out and I did have help with this. I met with our national senator, Brandon Craggin, I met with state representative Ted Poe, met with sheriff Tommy Gage and LaDores Helens, Army, the LaDore Purvis, who deals with sex problems out here with people, and she had sex crimes unit Houston come out here. We toured King's Colony, we went through it several times and I've done everything that I can do. I contacted the FBI, Ted Poe gave me a number of contacts, I was already talking to their boss, so there's no need to go any farther with that. We have to increase our police department out here and our salaries if we're going to move into King's Colony over there. We don't have enough police officers to do it right now. So the police officer is definitely important. Second thing, we got congestion up here, we're fixing to be hit real hard with traffic, so we're going to have to get with commissioner, we're going to sit down with county judge, talk to them about widening this road, doing whatever we've got to do, or getting another outlet out of here, which I believe there is only one, but we're going to have to do something or we're going to have a traffic jam out here that's going to be unbelievable. That's the two main things right now. All right.
The second question is, East Montgomery County is the fastest growing area in the Houston metropolitan area. As a result, East Montgomery County has increased traffic, more businesses, increased population and increased crime. What's your stance on severe economic development?
I believe that we need to have bonds and grants for infrastructure. One, before we even approach such with bonds, we must first have citywide plan of action. A, we need two, five, 10-year engineering plans. We must establish and rank projects through city workshops with our citizens input based on the need, availability of funding. Now this puts us in position to go after grant money from local, state, federal entities. And this will alleviate the need for bond. But before we go to the voters for the bond, we must have a plan of action.
One minute.
Come through.
Grant money is wonderful if we go get it. As I told you, we in that 10-year period had $600,000 worth of bond money come in, I did write a bond to redo the, well, I had a bond written, excuse me, I did not write it, we had a person write the bond to redo the roads and the ditches that was turned down by the city. I still think that should be written again, see if they're interested in it. Also, another idea that we may have, if we can find a developer that's got the money that knows what he's doing, to come in here and develop sections three and four and talk about annexing sections, part of sections three and four or all of sections three and four, depending on what the developer comes in and produces. And make it part of five back here, because there's people back here that doesn't want to become part of the city. That would give us one, two, three and four. And of course, as you know, we've got coming across a road, we've got a road coming in from Keywood, as I understand, here in the short line.
One minute.
Coming in new book. But anyway, that's our biggest problems, is our roads and getting people in here that will help us develop what we've got. Developer come in and actually know what he's doing and develop sections three and four or five. Thank you.
Thank you gentlemen. I've got to call off some numbers here. If you would, go ahead, come up with your numbers, call if you want to answer a question or ask a question. We're using the blue tickets. I'm just going to read off the last two numbers. Five, four. Six, two will be next. Six, eight will be after that. And five, six. Yes, sir.
Two of my ways of concern to the city Roman Forest are, has to do with the annexation of Tabola and the ditches out here. I'd like to know what the candidate stands on both of those issues.
So can I move up? I'm a auditor.
His question was, he wants to know what your stance is on the annexation of Tabola and widening to the ditches.
The ditches, the ditches.
Come here.
Who's the director? Just our person.
Okay. Annexation of Tabola. I talked with them down there when I was still in office. I really don't think that that's a good idea and I'm going to tell you why. Because right now, we're our own city here, at this point, this is all we are. What I was talking about, possible growth in the three and four, we don't know if it will happen. We know how big Tabola is going to be. If we go after Tabola, yes, there will be more money, but Tabola will have more homes, more people, and Tabola will be running the whole show. So there, that's why I think about the annexation of Tabola. No, I'm against it at this point. Ditches most definitely need to be done. I know that they've been needing to be done, they're just getting the money to do it. Ed Ryan Hard is doing what he could when he can and I don't understand the cities, well, I can see where they're, from the time I lived to now, they've got over $100,000 of rain coming in higher than I ever had, so there may be time, sorry, there may be time to, you know, some money there, they can get out there. The boulevard, the ditches were done on the boulevard, that was a great job, they come in real good in that big rain coming. They had a mess up there. But yes, most definitely the ditches need to be done, but here again, when we do that, get ready because you're going to have to go into your driveways and I don't know, it's going to be very expensive if you have to go back with concrete driveways. Okay, thank you.
Number sixty-two.
Based on ongoing investigation of the.
Wait, I was just waiting for you to go next. He's still got to answer.
Let me do it today.
I did, I was just trying to be ready.
Annexation of Tabola. That's a public one. First of all, we don't know the construction of this Tabola. See, man, you know, we don't know what the codes were. This is something that happened to be investigated and I agree, boy, they will outdo us, they will take over us. But we have to look at ways for our city to get more income because we get no sales tax dollars. All we have is property and home taxes. That's all, that's all we have. And we do have franchise taxes. So I don't know, it just takes an awful lot of studying and just to think about Tabola. I like three and four. Annexation.
One minute.
But it's something that has to be studied because once you annex them, you own them and you owe them what you give. Now, ditches. Ditches. This is a big, big deal. Floyd talked about earlier that they had a bond. Well, I understand about the bond, it was a bond up, there was no engineering before it. This is what I've been told. But this is a huge, huge deal and that's when we talked a while ago about getting, you know, we need to get what, how these around here, we need to get with the county, we need to have a strong relationship with the county. And just see what can we, because when you talk about roads and ditches, it's huge.
Thank you. I guess they're talking.
Based on the ongoing investigation of the past administration's on Texas Rangers and local law enforcement, how can each of you effectively say that citizens Roman Forest ethically backed, you can represent them ethically and honestly in their area?
Did you say?
Yes, sir. Based on ongoing investigation of past administration, how can each of you tell me in citizens Roman Forest that you can, you have the best interest of the citizens and best represent their interest ethically and honestly represent them, sir?
I can't really answer that because I'm not involved in that.
Is it me? Okay. From that audit, there's a company called Tax Plus, I have their audit right here, they sent me and they claimed that everything was fine. You don't understand, my audit is, this audit was sent out and audit is done on a, well, here's a major, doesn't even want to certify bonding agencies, let's see, it's an audit designed to provide reasonable but not absolute assurance because it will not perform detailed examination. Examination that y'all had, the audit that we paid for was $1,250. The two audits you have paid for are $15,250. They don't follow that criteria, they go to everything on there, everything and look at everything. I was given this, just after I was given this, I sent it to council, council was given this, attorney was given this and we're audited by the Texas municipal. When the Texas municipal league comes down, they look at all of this, they go over that and they found no problem. So here we are. I've got a team male attorney, I have one or two people arguing counsel, that's all. I don't have a problem in the world, I know I was doing right. I don't have a problem in the world. I did, I followed the books, did what I was told and like I said, that's, I didn't call for a point to point audit because it was 12,000 or 15,000, it was 15,250 versus 1,250. And today, we still don't know if any money's missing. So, I mean, nobody's been charged, I'm not even been talked to. So that's $30,000 somebody's got in their pocket somewhere, attorneys, I mean, for the accountants. It's only.
I have rebuttal.
The audit, that Tax Plus, whatever.
Speaking of helping them anyway, that audit was not licensed by the state of Texas, that audit, I'm not. That year, we rolled over $8,000. The following year, after we found out what we had with this audit, we paid $15,000, we paid King's Road, we replaced all non-legal, missed the street signs, stop signs, we done a lot of little things and we rolled over, even spending this $15,000, we rolled over 89.
I have rebuttal, sir.
All right.
I have your budgets right here, showing your budgets, every one of them. And I can tell you, when I left office, we had 379,568 tax dollars and that was our income. And our total income was 604,125. As of this year, last year, they had 405,462 dollars with an income of 704,295. That's $100,000, 100,000, 170, 80 dollars more than we had, plus they did not have a maintenance man that was working and we're still short of cotton. So money's, there's where money's at. And she was not licensed, I did not break the law in here, she's been used all, filed everybody's court.
Okay, sixty-eight. No, okay. Fifty-six. Now it's time to ask them. Sixty.
Don't y'all love the other gentleman? Anyway, my question was about Tabola and y'all pretty much answered that, so I'm going to save some time just like moves or even when y'all will be serving food on lectures there? Certainly. No, eat later, I will yield the floor to anybody that has a question, mine's been answered. So if anybody has a question, I will yield the floor. Anybody have a question? I will yield the floor. There we go, I got one right here, all right.
My question is mainly for Conley, if he goes to candidates. Conley, your campaign has been very far on the negative side as far as what direction you should be headed in, besides the fact that you have been a good candidate because you pointed out certain discrepancies. What, in what way would you be a better candidate than your opponents in the future?
Well, okay. He served 12 terms as mayor, I mean, 12 years as mayor. He had terms, he had terms in council and we've taken over, you know, I mean, by citizens. What is he going to do now that he didn't do in the years that he served? I mean, what, the infrastructure's great here, what is he going to do now? I mean, what is messed up here? What's wrong? Tell me what's wrong with what we're doing.
My question is, don't be negative, I want to ask you what you can do. Like, I don't want to, I don't want to hear what he can't do, I want to hear what you are going to do.
I've been doing it.
Well, hey, well, if you have been doing it, what else are you going to do that's different, better?
We're going to be working towards our roads and our ditches, that is the main concern in King's Colony. But you have to sit down and talk this thing over and you've got to have citizens in it, you've got to have councilors in it. This is a serious, serious matter, but it's the most important matter towards the city.
Is that directly to me as well? Okay. Yes, I've served, I've got the knowledge that we got, I serve out here, and I'll tell all of you, this is not an act, it's a week. I mean, we had people working with us and we worked together and we served and we got what we got through working together. But I will say one thing, I did come in here and go over the books, I mean, the minutes and in four years, Council Wallace has placed three things on the agenda. And I just went from that four year myself and I placed over 78. But I know I put things on the agenda to get it done, bring it forward, put it up there. But Council, you only put three things on the agenda. And the last one was getting this building up there, you wasn't hearing about it, so. You wouldn't hear it. I read, I got the minutes out, you can ask your secretary.
Okay.
I'm up here ready.
Number two. Oh, two. Seventy-three.
I'd like to hear your thoughts on the swimming pool and the park and what do you think the city's role should be in upgrading and taking that.
Okay, the park and swimming pool up there is better than it's ever been. This, I know you're responsible for the majority of that and I think you've done an excellent job on it. I really like the way the pool looks and the guards, I don't know, I guess we've got a pool service now instead of the maintenance man doing it, but that's okay, it's working. So yes, the park needs to be expanded, I'd like to see it expanded. Supposedly, I was here yesterday, there's a gentleman wanting to give $10,000 to the park now, you know, for, at least that's what I was told before and some other people, but we'll see if that comes true. And if that happens, maybe the Burke Pavilion, do you have a grant for the Burke Pavilion?
The grant is going to prove.
Okay, right there, we can start with that, yes. That'd be great. I'm all for it.
There are plans to replace the pavilion next year. We have, we have taken the grant with MSAT's approval and put it to the state parks and whatever they're called to get a larger grant that's going to help us put new playground equipment and we do have the plans for the pavilion. And this is going to happen, I believe, I mean, we're going to do new rides and all that for our children and it's going to be great.
Seventy-seven. Pardon me? Blue. Seventy-seven. Seventy-five. Ninety-two. Okay.
Ninety-two.
Okay.
This is a touchy subject for a lot of residents, um, just by following the social media for the city, but, um, I know Tony Burns came, his campaign on beautifying the city, but, what do you guys have in mind for these columns at the front of Roman Forest? Because Tabola's coming in, and they have a beautiful entryway, and we look like lunchboxes, because those things look terrible.
I agree.
The columns are sealed from it, um, they're outside of the city limits, so city money cannot, and this is part of the things that I know, city money cannot be used on that, it has, money has to come from donations or grants, because it is outside the city limits. Uh, the last time they were rebuilt, I was part of that rebuild, and some of where the prints are still in here for. Uh, when they were tearing them down, I believe Mayor Hsu Stokman was tearing them down and, and...
Why?
Well, I don't know, so, before, before you say that, let me say, I wasn't agreement with him. Because I thought we could do something with it, I wanted to do something with it and make it free. I don't know, nobody's doing anything with it right now, we don't have any committees, we don't have anything going on. I mean, there's been some talk about it, but that's it, talk, nobody's done a thing. So, if we don't do something with it, yeah, it's, uh, as much as I hate to say it, now, they, they look horrible, and we're gonna do something with them, or take them down one or two, that's my opinion.
Oh, that is a, uh, that's a fifty-fifty. I mean, people wanna chop your head off, stop by chopping the columns down, and some people want them down. But, there is progress moving forward. There is a committee that's gonna be formed again by Chuck Jones.
No.
And I'm just telling you what I've been told, too. I just want to kind of...
He did it last time, and they still look like crap.
I know, I know.
And I'm at, I'm at, I'm at, and nobody knows where it's been. So, really, if you wanna be this at that, I don't think so.
Well, you got any suggestions?
Tear it out.
Can you say?
I am sure that we could go to the vote, and then we tear them down next week, I'm sure.
Okay, as, as moderator, I mean, let me address that. Um, the, the best way to handle that is bring it up at your city council meeting, go to your city councilmen at that time, tell them what you want done, get on the agenda, and get a vote, and, and take care of it that way. This, this isn't really the time to... I, I know it's a high topic, I, I've been through a number of it, I was there when the commissioner took the other two down, and there was a big deal for that too, so, um, yeah, um, that's my suggestion for that one. Do we have, do you have anybody else that has another, that has questions? For each gentleman, go ahead.
First, I wanna thank city council for taking care of the police officers and raising, raising their pay and bringing them close to, uh, what a, what a normal living wage would be, and I say close to. To continue to have a quality police force and to take care of King's Colony, you're going to have to add officers and make sure that those officers are paid what they need to be paid to keep good officers on board, not lose like some of the officers who have passed. I would ask each one of you, what are you going to do in the future to ensure that the police department is, is adequately funded so that they can hire the officers that we're gonna need to handle the King's Colony and the growth we're gonna see at Tabola and across the street, because we're gonna have more traffic through here, and we're gonna see more crime if we don't ensure that the police department is properly paid and staffed.
Okay. I agree with one hundred percent. And, uh, we actually have funds to do these things, and it's not just police department, city employees across the board, you know, we, we got to take care of our people. Chief and I have to talk, uh, we, we gave them, they got a pay raise, that's how it's over. And the couple of chiefs, if things continue as they are right now with the finances, there's no telling what we can do in the future, because we are a huge and tasking financially right now, and it's getting better.
I'm gonna tell you on a hot spot here, Chief, every budget I proposed had anywhere from three to five percent pay raises for the police department, am I right? That's what I proposed. Council did not go with it, not all of council, but all it takes is three. Council did not go with it, I have been trying to get them up. When I come out here, count, the police officers were making six dollars an hour, that's it, no benefits, no holidays, no nothing. Since then, they've got benefits, while I was mayor out here, they had benefits, they got holidays, they've got an increase, a pretty good jump pay there at the start, because they were only making six dollars an hour. We've got better equipment, we spent a lot of money on the police department, yes, but we need, we need to spend more on the police department, and we need to get their salaries on up. But I'm just, if you think it's bad now, you ought to saw it when I come in, and that's the way it had been even before the other mayors, so, you know, until somebody addressed it. Until somebody addressed it, there's not a grits, I wanna push to keep, put money in the police department. I wanna keep pushing. And I get more officers, get the officer that had been missing now for two years, I need that officer back. No reason they should not, he's not hired, son, he shouldn't be hired. That's it. Thank you.
Yes, I know this was been asked, Mr. Wallace, a couple of times. I've heard a lot of your statements of saying, "We shouldn't this, we shouldn't that," and I think this is what no one was asking also. I wanna know what you're gonna do, and my second part of that question event's gonna be, I've had some major problems up in the city here recently, I've sent certain letters to the mayor. Do you know anything about him? And if not, why not? And are you going to be able to address that further, because if it looks like it's a major problem, I think all of council should know, am I correct? I just would like to know what, what you can do. I know, we need to have do, I've talked to the commissioner more myself than I think I ever should have to. He knows me by name. And I never would've had to do that three, four years ago.
Well, "we" is council, that's, that's what I'm trying to say. Now, all I can tell you there, I can address this with the mayor tomorrow. I'm gonna get back to you, I, I didn't know about the...
Can I just, can I just, okay. This is not just something that happened last week, this has been going over for a year. And I will present all of council at our next meeting, but I just briefly wanted to touch on this tonight.
You'll be with him, too?
I mean, it seems like all of council should know, and it should not be my job to contact every single one of you and let you know. I have great stories, so I don't have time for that, so. That's how much I feel.
Counselor, you're welcome. Did you want to touch on that?
Oh, yes. I know the problem you're talking about, you did contact me, which happens quite often, people still contact you, but, I did before I came here, David's got the same problem behind you, and, uh, even commissioner says it's, it's a problem that should be solved here. Personally, I believe it's the inspector's job to take care of that, to make sure it's right. Uh, I can't speak because I'm not on council right now, but, you, you've got a bad, you didn't, you never had that drainage problem before, because I know where you live, and I know where David lives. Neither one of you ever had that kind of drainage problem before until they built that big, huge driveway there with that big hump and everything.
As a part of councilwoman, would you be able to help you? As a part of council, would you be more able to help in the future?
Anytime you call, I'll, anybody's ever called me, I come out. I don't care who, by myself or whoever, I'll always come out. And did my best, I, I could always fix everything, but I did my best. So, here.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions for these two, for these two from the audience? Yes, sir?
You guys leave me in a minute, I don't know.
I got forty-five, I got forty-five minutes for each segment, so where's, where's the other one?
I don't know, that, that's where they...
We have till midnight.
I think I heard you say that the city is in great financial condition. If that's the case, why can't we fix some of these flooding problems we have, spend some of that money on that? There's people here whose homes have gotten watered several times, and nothing, well, I shouldn't say nothing. Recently, I've seen some work being done along Maggolie Bend, near where I live, but it hasn't really taken care of the problem, because water's still waste in those ditches.
Okay.
So, if we're flush with money, why can't we take care of the problems?
We're not flush with money, huh?
I heard you say the finances were in good shape.
Compared to prior year, to prior year?
Well...
Now?
It seems to me, I lived here thirty-two years, and the flooding problems have progressively gotten worse, they've never... I shouldn't say it, I think once since I've lived here, the county came in and redid the dishes, and they cleaned everybody's carpets. And that's probably twenty-some years ago. And since then, nothing's really been done that I can see, except after this, that last five inch rain we had.
Time, your question's still over, now he gets to answer.
Well, I mean, when you talk about ditches, what we're doing right now is we're addressing with the maintenance department, what we can, we, we can try to pick the worst problem, and then our maintenance department goes out and tries to fix that. But when you start talking about ditches, you're talking about engineering. You're, you're talking about a time. That's what we talked about earlier. It, it's major, you, you can't, the revenue that you have to come up with to remedy these ditches, you gotta get a, a grant, bond, we gotta figure out, that's why I was talking earlier about having a workshop with citizens and council, to figure out how we can come up with the monies. A, a big grant, I don't know, that's what we gotta work towards with this thing.
Did I ever propose? I mean, I hear a lot of comments here that we gotta do this, we gotta do that, we gotta have a meeting, we gotta have a committee. What are we gonna do it all the time? I mean, these problems aren't new, the project's been here for years.
Understand that?
This is the reason now, so it's like we need the second maintenance person out here, you know, to help here this time when it's, when it's slack. And also, a, a major safety fixture about having one person operate equipment by itself, but, uh, when I was in, uh, we had been drag a tire through several of them, that's how we cleaned the ones that people said just had a problem with, we'd put the tractor under road foot or wire foot, and we'd drag that tire foot and drag it out. Our problem is all the silt has come up now so high, and the ditches, the ditches have got to be dug out. And the new homes that's being built right now, there's a problem, they're being built up high. So, once you start on these ditches, you're gonna have, the older homes is gonna have lower ditches, your newer homes gonna have higher ditches. Nobody's taking that into consideration. And that's, that's gonna be, uh, gonna be something to deal with. But they can't clean, can still, I mean, if you got a ditch clogged up, he can shoot air through there and drag a tire through there, and he drags out so much stuff like that, or just do something.
All right, thank you all, um, I'll let you speak after you're closing.
I, I have one more question.
Yes, sir.
So, Kevin, continuing to talk about this, biggest concern from, from first in the engineering field is that, like, like Floyd touched on developing, as, as we develop more impermeability, which means putting houses up where the water runs off faster, cleaning out the ditches where it runs off fast, all we do is transfer problems from here down the street. Unless it's a comprehensive issue where the county and the state take up and have an opportunity for the water to go someplace, all we're doing is moving a problem from my neighborhood into your neighborhood and to your neighborhood. You know, so, but the issue that I've seen here is what's being done with the new house? Why aren't our developers putting something in, because they're, they're, they're making a living in my neighborhood? The trucks that come through my neighborhood are tearing up my streets. The, the colors that are putting, being put in shouldn't be providing, why are we providing on them to do something in good faith? I come here and I see somebody calling them up. Check the elevation to make sure that the upstream and downstream are equal, so we have flow. Working only to get the money for us, for our, I mean, if the guy comes in here with a permit and requests, why aren't we, why aren't we recovering that revenue?
Well, you know, we've been, we've been on this drum a long time, um, you've got to have it engineered, and, and, and your builders are supposed to shoot the grades, they're supposed to do all of this stuff, and we have a, um, building inspector firm. And, uh, you know, it, it's on them, and it's only on our, and the building inspector firm, but this, this drainage deal is huge, it's just... But I'll be, I, I don't know what to say about that. He's gotta start somewhere. We've talked about it, uh, anybody's got a suggestion, knows how to do it, let me know. I mean, what could do tomorrow and over?
That's the question.
Uh, with, with...
Flooding is first class.
We're responsible.
Yeah. Do you have the opportunity, Coach?
Yes, Steve, I know what you're, you're saying there, there, this will be very expensive, because they're gonna have to come in there, and there's gonna have to be colors four of, and looking at it, I'm gonna say the newer homes are gonna be the one to be the cheapest, if, if, if we're gonna do it, it's gonna be the cheapest to have done, because there's a lot fewer of them than there is the, uh, older homes. Of course, some of the older homes have crushed driveways in there, and it's, that really causes a problem too when you get the, the stoppage there. So, uh, I'm gonna have to, have to agree with Conley on this, and I, without an engineer coming in here and shooting this, you've got to start one where, at one place and start owning, but you gotta have the money right there to do it with. It's gotta be allotted to that, and it's gotta be set on that and go with that. And you can just start one little bit at a time, and that's the only way you can do it, because we would never have the money to come in here and do all of these streets or, or ditches at one time, I guess. They just won't be there. Perhaps you can get a grant or a bond, now, if you wanna pass a bond, remember, I tried that before, it didn't work.
What was the quote on the engineering study, gentlemen, that we had? Just the engineering study, Mayor, former mayor?
I don't remember.
Hundred thousand dollars?
Yeah.
Okay, I just wanted that to be out there. That was just an engineering study, sorry.
Okay, we're, we're at time right now, I, I'm gonna take a, a minute if I can of, of personal privilege. The drainage issue is not just a problem in Roman Forest, the drainage issue is all of East County, just like the transportation issue is a problem in East County. We've got, um, we've had very little, um, as far as comprehensive plan in East County for building, for roads, for ditches, for, for floods, for, you name it. Um, and it's got a challenge. Um, and I respect all of y'all for your thoughts and opinions tonight, keep it going, continue to talk to the city council, continue to talk to the county commissioner, uh, because it's the only way it's gonna get changed. The developers have had their freedom to do whatever they want to in East County, and they've not been held responsible by our government, and it's gotta stop. You're the only ones that are gonna make it happen. Okay, thank you, gentlemen, for that. Closing the statements, you opened up, Conley, you'll start your three-minute closing statement.
Okay, I'd like to, I'd like to thank the moderators, the moderators. In regards to my opponent, the past mayor of Roman Forest, I felt there are many issues that should not be forgotten or swept under the rug in this election. While it was accomplished in his several terms, city official, there's no transparency in his business duties, having only himself as a signer on Roman Forest bank accounts. This leads a, a great deal in our city call for to know how it's been affected. Until this is brought to the attention of the council, the procedure will put in place to ensure that there's no question that draws from city finances.
the procedure will put in place to ensure that there's no question that draws from city funds. My opponent stressed that I did not support the police department. I strongly disagree with that statement. His questions were actions as mayor did not enable the police department or the city employees to receive well-deserved pay increases and your equipment. And in the time I've been, I've always, not only did the police department raise me as, get a pay increase in October of this year, but also a much-needed protocol. We can accomplish this much quicker, but financial situation we had to work out of, and this is where we are now, and we're starting to move on. So... And, you know, we've talked about the newsletter, not yet, not yet, like this. Well, we, right now, on Facebook, we have, we have Facebook. We have the ratings, the website. It's all, everything that happens in council is on there. Now, I know there's a lot of elderly people that do not have any, you know, computer savvy, I guess. But all they have to do is ask, come up here and ask us, and we'll print it out for them. So, in closing, I want to thank the great people that I've worked with from my Roman Forest, the best place to live. I ask for your continued support on election day, November fourth. By voting for me, knowing that your vote will be our ethical first-class person.
Thank y'all for allowing us such an opportunity. Let me, thank to read, but I wanna make sure that we get everything out here tonight. You know, I don't want, you know, letters flying around later on that I don't get a chance to answer. So that's why I wanted everything out tonight, too. I followed every standard step and every way. The auditor that we were using was not a licensed auditor. But once again, I wasn't the only one who was fooled by that for about, what, seven, eight years, about Texas municipally, the lawyer, counsel. So I wasn't the only one that made that mistake. I'll accept my mistakes. And that was one that I didn't make, that I didn't catch the fact that she was not an auditor like that. But twelve fifty versus fifteen fifties, a lot different, too. I'm gonna ask you for your vote. I love this place. I've been out here. You know, any of y'all, and the ones that know me, know you can call me at any time for any reason, and I'll answer you. And let me say one other thing. I do not want the mayor's job. I'm fine right here. Had I wanted the mayor's job, I could get him. He can have the mayor's job. I don't need discretion. But I, I do know what it takes to keep this thing going. And I've got the experience behind me, the knowledge. And I know how to work with the people that's upstairs. And they're personal friends, not just acquaintances. They're, they're personal friends. And I can make it happen. And I'm gonna ask you, please give me your vote, and I'll continue to do what I was doing in the past. And like I said, if mistakes made, I accept my mistake. If they don't want to, that's fine. But I want everything out right now, so like I said, we don't get a letter floating out through there somewhere later on with assassination.
One minute.
I don't need that out there. Again, I just ask you for your vote. I appreciate it.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Hello, everybody. My name is David Lane. I've been sitting out here for about twenty-two years off and on. I'm running for position three on the public, so I'm just gonna introduce myself and say, tell you a little bit about myself. I'm married to your city secretary, so I think that's a, that's a plus for me. I get a little brief every morning of what's going on in the city, and the police department, the mayor, the mayor. So I find that refreshing. Anyway, I look forward to serving with the council members. I think the city's done a great job in the last two years, what I've seen. I've become a council meetings now for about six years, and I've really seen a great turnaround in the city. Been a lot of things done, a lot of increases, a lot of new looks, a lot of new moving forward, and I think it was well past it. I look forward to continuing to work with the existing council or the new council to help with your drains issues. I know that's important out here with your roads. Obviously, that's important. Me and Chief get along great, and he has my ear, and I believe I have his. And I'd like to look forward to working with him with any issues he has. I believe safety is what draws, draws us here, and it draws me back here. I don't live back in this area. I wanted to live out here for the main reason, because it was a safe place to live. If it wasn't, I don't think a lot of us would be living here. But I do understand you're, you're suffering with the drainage issues, and I would like to work with council to get those, those solved the best we can. Your roads, I think we all live down the front of your road. And over the years, it's just gonna get worse, and it's something we gotta address in the future. Like I said, I would compliment this, this current council and the mayor. They get along great. I've seen them turn over a budget, twenty-three minutes flat. It's the first time I've seen that in six years. They get along well. They have my support. Family has my support. Anyway, I'd like to just welcome you. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to serve, and I look forward to serving.
Okay, we'll start with the other two candidates. I can't remember who won the coin toss. Okay, that's them. In three minutes, and then for each of you, then we'll charge the question.
Well, some of you guys know me. My name's Tony Garza. I'm running for city council, position one. I have been in Marion for eighteen years. We moved here in two thousand and five, built a home here. We couldn't build a home anywhere. We decided to build one here. My wife grew up here. Her family grew up here. You know, the reason why I wanna run for city council is there's a lot of things that I see, mainly in the beautification department, one down the boulevard, stumps that's been there for years. They have trees growing on the side of them. Five hundred bugs, get a stump, drive it, clean it. Park area, weed eating, edging, mowing, blowing, clean that up. You know, that's what's got me involved. I really wanna clean the city up. The police department, you know, just like I said, we moved here in two thousand and five. And I own a commercial mowing company. I pay my mowers, guys that mow grass, more than what they make. Last year, I had a guy make it fifteen bucks an hour mowing grass. They was making twelve, now they're making fourteen. I, when I heard that, I was shocked. I was like, I was thinking, you know, twenty, twenty-two, twenty-five, I don't know. That was very shocking to me. And then seeing the big turnover of police officers come in, go out. Every time you drop by, you see a new cop. You know, you, I think in order to have good protection, good police, we need to pay them much better. I don't wanna see the same cop. I don't wanna see a whole bunch of new guys come in, get trained, go to HBD, go to Harris County, and, you know, they're going somewhere else, because, you know, they're gonna get, they're gonna get more money somewhere else. That's why I'm getting involved. Thank you very much.
First of all, thank y'all for coming tonight. My name's Scott Baker. I'm running for reelection. City council, position one. Been living here. We built a house, me and my wife, Annie Baker. We built a house here in two thousand and two. We raised two kids. Both went to A L A G and S U myself. Active ladies. Graduated from New County High School. Worked for Campbell Concrete, where I've been working for twenty years. Now a assistant area supervisor, over production. I have about sixty to seventy-five guys that work for me, under me. I too moved here because it was so safe. Growing up in New County, coming through Roman Forest to go to school. You know, the police, you always hear the police are so bad here, you know. And that keeps all the criminals out. I did approve the passing of the budget to give the police department the biggest raise they've ever had in the city.
We'll have a short speech. That's the fun part. All right, I'll go back to the questions that you were given. Candidates quite often talk about many issues with the city, but we don't always hear the solutions to these issues. And you heard some of those tonight, so... What are the most important issues you wish to address if elected to city council or reelected? And what are your solutions to these issues? I'll let you start. You have the fun with it?
I don't care.
You know, my, like I said, my biggest thing is beautification. The bowl is coming up. Beautiful down there. Beautiful. I know, just like I said, you know, with the columns, that's a touchy subject. You know, from what I understand, that's not our property. We have no access to water, electricity, you know, it's, it's kind of, you know, I hate to say it, but tear them down. Tear them down. My, my idea, put the money here on the forest. As soon as you come over our bridge with road splits, I was thinking, just an idea, build a smaller mock setup of the columns. Fifteen, eighteen feet tall. Right there with a little waterfall, water lights shooting up toward the columns. Beautiful, beautiful, you know. Not really pecked out. I don't know about the painting, light, you know, it's gotta update it. Maybe more of a neutral color.
One minute.
That's kind of what I was thinking about that. I've seen a lot of issues here with the park. It's like I said, the weed eating, blowing. I had went down there about a month ago. We had a hard rain, and all that much was out on the parking lot. I got tired of seeing it. Driving out to work, I was seeing, okay, let's go and pick them up. Me and my worker went down there, swept it up, picked it up, do it in the woods. Had my foal, sprayed weed killer on the, on the grass that's grown through the asphalt. Cleaned all that up. I cleaned the vines off the bridge, because that was an absolute mess. Cleaned that big ditch by Gordons. Took my chainsaw, cut some trees down, you know, I, you know. I think we spent a total of seven hours. We got quite a bit done. That's just me and, me and another guy. Police department, just like I said, I wanna work on these guys, getting them more money. Fourteen dollars, fourteen dollars an hour is still a little bit too low. I don't, I don't wanna see a big, a ripping, a locking door.
I think the issues I'd like to address next two years would be, one being Kings College. They're shooting guns, playing loud music, you know, interrupting our homeowners' round. To work with the Montgomery County Sheriff's Department to curb all the gunfire, keep the police presence. There've already been several cases of bullets coming down over here, hitting carboards and windshield. We've worked a couple cases in defense, but really dangerous. Roads and drainage. I've already voted to approve spending, add the budget for, for drainage and then silver roads to replace the culverts and do some ditch digging. The county's gonna start on that sometime outside there.
Second question. East Montgomery County is the fastest-growing area of the Houston metropolitan area. As a result, East Montgomery County has increased traffic, more businesses, increased population, and increased supply. What is your stance on steering economic development of Roman Forest, Scott?
I, I think if there's some top on the annex in the P U D three, section four, I think that'd be a good idea, increase tax revenue for Roman City.
Well, we understand Galaxy, Happy Way, maybe, I think the Boulevard, they can run a commercial business. With all the growing that's coming up around here, I'm afraid that we're gonna have more businesses come in. Commercial business, maybe not right now, maybe even a couple of years, two, three, five years, when it gets a little crazy around here. I don't wanna see a sandwich yard or a beard joint on Happy Way. You know, I don't see what's the... Maybe we can go out and bring some businesses in. Talk to some business, see if they would wanna buy in here. Storage lot would be great. Chambers RV storage lot. I think that would be really nice. But in turn, beautification, police, that's where that comes into play. Who's gonna wanna come and build in here, when they got the bowl down there? Come in here, make it beautiful in here, ground these stupid stumps, clean all that up, clean the park area up. Build something in the front entryway. Pay these guys more money. Have better police protection. Make it look like a neighborhood in two thousand and fourteen, not nineteen seventy. I think, I think we're still back in the day. I really wanna bring in, bring some businesses in here. Hopefully, they would buy some property and build some business.
All right, we'll start with audience questions. Fifty. Five zero. Correct color tickets, let's do it. Sixty-five. Twenty-five. Everybody's got tickets. Thirty-one. Anybody with a office depot ticket? Ninety-eight. Thirty-three.
Excuse me for asking you questions. When you come into the city, what a lot of people look at, the judge of city, is what the city hall, the grounds, the public grounds look like. You mentioned the driveway down to the park. Mother Nature is having her way with that. We painted stripes to support some of the Fourth of July, or it's a note of, written in burr anyway, but we need to have burr stripes. But the real question is, when you look at city hall here, how many have to walk through the mud to get in here? We need to have a beautification. We need to have a pavement out here, where we can park. Walk in here, not have to walk ankle-deep in the mud. I can launch my boat with some of those holes. So I guess, for the candidates, what would you do to clean up city hall? Hide the tractors and everything, so that area look better for the average person driving through there? Try to make a judgment. Do they wanna leave Roman Forest, or do they wanna go someplace else?
Well, Jerry, you know, that's funny that you say that. We talked about that the other day. Having this asphalted, I'm sure we can't afford concrete. Asphalt would be great. Build a fence, cross to hide all of, you know, the hanging stuff over there. Now, unfortunately, these three guys have advantage over me. I've never been in office. These three, these three guys have advantage as in knowing what it's gonna take, mainly the budget, how much money. But I'm willing to learn that. I've run my business since two thousand and five, and it's still running. I do it full-time. I get out there, I do the work with my work. I have no problem working. If I need to get out here, I should do the work. I will, I will, whatever I can do.
Jerry, it's funny you asked that question. Chief and myself, when they were paving the Boulevard, we had come out and measured the parking lot for asphalt, and we're, we're still kicking that around. It's gonna be on the agenda pretty soon, the parking lot here at City Hall.
Number thirty-eight. Twenty-seven. Eighty-three. Twenty-eight. Sixty-eight.
Sorry, listen. What can y'all do differently that you see the city's not gonna run in the next two years? What would y'all like to see done differently, or you see there's a flaw in the city that you might...
Or you see that there's a flaw in the city that you might fix? Anyone? Anyone?
Well, I kind of feel we have a little problem internally with maybe some maintenance issues. I want to thank Tony for cleaning around the guardrails. It looks real good up there. That's the greatest thing. We have two vacant bins, and that is inside the city. So we'll be working on that a bit too. Get a little more communication going with Lynn and his office.
Pretty much the same thing. I'd like to get on city council to address that, whether I take charge and help out, whatever I need to do. As you can see, I've already done a little bit myself because I just ran crazy. You know, even in the past, Carlos called me in the winter time, and we had a freeze. I jumped on my tractor, chainsaw, we threw around the neighborhood here. Chopping trees down so people can get out of driveways through the roads. My work is real slow sometimes, so I had a lot of free time. We're today. That's a good thing, buddy. I can help out. I'm more of a councilman that will get involved. I will get out here and when my sleeves open, get dirty, however I can help. I did that during the store, helped my tractor brand, put a slipper chute on, same thing, you know, cut trees, get them off the road, help out however I can. So if I get elected, first I'll have to see what it all entails, how we go about fixing the problem, whether it's maintenance, what they're doing during the day, I do not know. But I do know it's not up to par, at least not up to my par, it looks bad. I think it should look much better. Like I said, the bowl is coming up. If you want people coming in, the Roman Forest looking to buy land, they don't want to buy there, they're going to come in and think, holy crap, now this is, let's go back to the seventies. It looks bad, and I really want to help clean it up. Thank you.
Sixty-six.
I heard talk about annexing sections four, three, four, and five again, again. And as a city of our size, how are we going to, first question, how are we going to finance the infrastructure that we're responsible for? And how are you guys going to get the mud district on board to provide services that have been left disrepair? At this point, I'm not sure we have capacity in our sewer street plant or our water plant to support additional housing like that. How are we going, where are we going to get the money just for our own, to pay the streets, repay the streets that we have back there from the Adlora on empty lots? I don't think you can speak to that.
You're absolutely right. I was in the water, the water field for ten years until I started my own company. And I know that's one of the problems that they do have. They won't let anybody go back there because our water sewer plants now are over-capped. And if we're going to annex that, it's going to be a lot of money. You talk about the roads, the fire hydrants, the water mains, I'm sure there's water mains that are busted back there, they're probably losing them if it's not kept off. Not really for sure. I'm not really for sure how we're going to annex that. I just don't think the city has enough money right now to get involved in that, whether we get a grant, I'm not really for sure. Just like I said, I'm not in council, I don't know how all this works yet. But I'm definitely ready to get involved and learn as much as I can. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Roy, answer your question. They visited the water department here about last week, and they actually got nine leaking water lines in that section back there that they're working on, checking here one at a time. And as far as roads, you know, if you go after a bond, but a bond, it equals higher taxes. And that would be a fast fix. Grant, if you go after a grant, taxes wouldn't go up, that'd be a long-term fix. Of course, we could, you know, fix a road here and there, maybe two a year. That would be my opinion.
Thank you, Ford.
Seventy-nine.
In the previous debate, there was a lot of discussion and talk about financial reports and fraud from those financial reports from previous administrations. Given based on what councilman Spitzer knows, which he probably has a little more insight, Mr. Carter, you probably have a little more, you don't have the advantages there. Based on what y'all know, is there any fraud that has taken place in previous administrations with those reports?
Let me just say this, that everybody's innocent right now. Nobody's been found guilty of anything. There is investigation going on, and I've been a part of it, and it's a lot of it was behind closed doors, closed session. So I don't ever have to go through that again. It was, it should, I've heard there's going to be a statement out tomorrow, so maybe that'd be better.
Well, just like you said, I don't know what all went on. All that was behind closed doors. I only know by what I hear. And I'm the type of guy, I don't really listen to workers until someone's arrested, then I'll cast a judgment. I'm not saying anything about who's guilty or who's not. That's just how I am until, until someone is arrested, and then that's proof to me.
Forty-eight.
About two-part question. What's the advantage to annex on three and four and rebuild, rebuilding their infrastructure when we need to rebuild one and two's infrastructure? And second part is, why would we spend a lot of money on beautifying the city when people's homes are flooded? Wouldn't we be better served to fix those problems first and then beautify the city? When we talk about nobody wants to move in here because the city's not pretty well, when they see water laying in the ditches and they talk to people whose homes are flooded, why would they want to buy here in the first place? I'd like to both address that.
Well, I don't have a flooding problem, and just like I said, I really don't know what all goes on here at city hall because I'm not involved. So I don't know who else houses are flooded. I do know it's an issue, and I know it's been going on for how many years? Years and years from what I hear, past, you know, when Fort Smith had issues back then, and it's still not fixed. To me, beautification, it is a very cheap and more of a guiding manual labor, making sure things are done. When it comes to digging the ditches, that's a lot of money, which I understand it's a big issue with a lot of residents. But what I'm talking about is, to me, would be a cheap fix. You know, beautification is, to me, is not going to cost a lot of money.
What about the annexation?
Annexation, three and four? You know, I think whenever the bowl moves and grows, I'm thinking that someone's going to come in and buy this. Whether, I'm afraid of the city of Houston may come in and annex all this, hope not here. Hope they don't annex the bowl, I don't know. I really don't know if I'm for or against annexation back here because, like I said, I'm still getting involved in all this, so I don't know what all it entails. There's a lot of maintenance going on back there. There's a lot of work and a lot of money. So I do not know if it's an idea, a good idea or not to annex it. Just like I said, I think we should focus on Roman Forest here, focus on where we're living at now, spend the money here.
As far as I'm aware of, there's only been one house flooded, right, in the neighborhood that's up front?
Yeah.
On, what's your street?
Well, I have water in my house. I know two houses on Main Hill are fenced, they have water.
Okay. We're working on the drainage issue, and I have passed, you know, money to be spent on it, and I'll keep working on it. So last thing, want somebody to get water in their house. And the very first one, I rode around with the mayor, Mayor Rick's, three or four times during big rains, we got everything wrote down, just trying to get everything, you know, all the money, right to work on. The one at Silver Oaks seemed to be the worst for me because it's about, you know, almost going to Scott's house every time. I'm not quite sure, only go, that one house flooded up front, but as far as the annexation in the back, I think it'd probably be a good thing. Get all the nine water bikes fixed, if it's leaking, probably be able to pour water out there.
Water's not the city's problem.
Okay. Seven, three. Ninety-nine.
I have that. I want to give it to somebody. I don't want to use it.
If somebody liked it, you could.
I have a question that I should ask you people. I've heard Tom Lambson talking about King's Colony quite a bit over the day, but my question to you guys is, who out of the two of you are going to actually stand up and do something about King's Colony?
I live on the front lines. I know Chief is tired hearing from me on a weekly basis. I mean, literally a month ago, there was a bull running down on, you know, the store shed, just fifty yards from my house, while I was outside with my children. I mean, it's an every weekend thing. And I honestly feel like the only person that's getting their hands dirty in this is probably, I appreciate your efforts, and the police, I mean, I literally lost it home to our officers this weekend with the deer. So, I mean, I first come up in the morning, or maybe not try that, it was late. Me and Adam get up for lunch on Sundays, and, you know, we have to, he has to be up at four, and here it is, twelve o'clock in the morning, and there's still music going crazy, and there's bullets, and there's everything else. Who's going to do something about it besides telling me to call immigration or something else?
We'll beat this shit up. I don't usually tell a lot of people, I ride around the police department quite often, and we've been back to King's Colony, and we're not, we haven't forgotten about it. I mean, me and the chief, we rode back there, and a guy pulled a gun out, had it to his side, and we drove by. I know how dangerous it is, and I will not forget about that King's Colony back there. We will work on it.
I've heard that numerous times, but now I'm being told, you need to call immigration, you need to call the sheriff's department, but all the sheriff's department is doing is dispatching our police, which they can't do it by themselves. So who on council is going to stand up behind their citizens? I mean, not everybody lives on Athens or Hemingberg, right there by it. I don't know the streets in the back there, right there, but, I mean, somebody's got to stand up and help us because I can't do it by myself. I waged a war against them calling immigration every day for weeks, and it got quiet for a while, but now it's coming back full force and not worse.
First of all, I'd like to say that I'm sorry that you live there. You have to pay the same amount of taxes every day that you live there. I only live there, several people, some people's homes back up to that. I have been back there twice in my regular vehicle, just to scope it out, to see what's going on. Just like I said, these guys here have more of an advantage because they know what's going to get the drop around. I know I'm new at this, but just like I said, I'm willing to do whatever it takes. Unfortunately, my last name is Carson, but I can speak Spanish. I would say, if I'm Spanish, I can go back there and, you know. Whatever I can do, I would love to help, you know. I know there's a lot going on back there, and I know it's dangerous. And that's exactly why these poor officers, these poor money, you know, they can make a few kinds of grass, they can make a lot of money. So my call it does, I want to help out and help right here.
I have a previous number, can I use it?
Yes, ma'am, go ahead.
Regarding King's Colony, I've heard that there is some way of going through the state legislature to combat, to request only for this county of Montgomery that we take control of what is considered gray areas, where there is no control over them, they don't have to pay taxes for police or fire or that type of thing. I was wondering if you were aware of anything like that behind the happening, or I've heard the talk had come up that it would be more probable to get it passed if only we went forward as Montgomery County and not as the whole state, that maybe the legislature would grant for Montgomery County.
Well, if they're not paying taxes and not getting in trouble for it, I'd sure like to know how they're doing.
It's got said, you know, they're living out in the woods, they have outhouses for bathrooms, the sewer runs all the way around. This is, I'm sure it's just a few, you know, I'm sure they all, I'm sure there's good people back there, but a few bad out here, they ruin it for the whole set of the ditch. I have met a few people that have been there, some were stuck in a ditch over there, and I helped them pull them out for a lifetime. But that being said, it's...
Can I address this just for a minute? I looked heavily into King's Colony, and I still work with Lora, with other entities. King's Colony is, you don't have an nth of what's going on in King's Colony with the human trafficking, with the children that are being sold as sex slaves, with the adults that are taking place, the drugs that are taking place. This community back here is totally illegal, and we cannot get the county to do anything about it. In order to sell property in the state of Texas, you have to have, a developer has to have a plan for it, you have to have water, you have to have sewer, or you're selling acreage, or you're selling lots, and they have none of that. It's all illegal. They're selling illegal titles for these pieces of property. They're, they've got, and this is a real elaborate scheme. They've got pictures of postcards that they're producing to Mexico, El Salvador, and South and Central America, that are showing houses in the woodlands that are telling these people that this is what's available up here. They're selling these lots anywhere from ten to sixty thousand dollars. They're reselling these lots because they're personal finance, so that somebody will come in and go pay five or ten thousand dollars for it, and they don't pay it off, and then they end up leaving. So somebody will come in and they'll pay five or ten thousand dollars for it and they don't pay it off and then they end up leaving. It's not just an issue with the noise. It's a, it's a drug cartel and it, it, it's bad. We will not send, for those of you that don't know, on the border in the Osco District, won't send an ambulance back there without backup. It's that bad. And, and trust me, I feel for you. We've taken this to Ted Poe's office, we've taken it to the state legislature. We've talked to, we've talked to, um, the commissioners. Nobody wants to touch it. Environmentally, they should, environmentally, they should come down and shut it completely down and run everybody out. I don't know all of the spider web that, that's there, but trust me, it's huge. I went to, um, Cleveland because they were, the same organization was buying two thousand acres in Cleveland to do the exact same thing. This is colonies that are, that do this in, in South and Central America, do the exact same thing. They're central, they have the complete control over it, they have their own police force. Everything is done within there, that's happening in our nation, our state, in our county. We cannot get the support that we need.
Claimed that those lots were grandfathered in because the subdivision was back there at the same time. Same building was built of this subdivision and, you know, that was Roy Harris developed most subdivisions. The citizens added into it pretty heavy back there.
And, and that all becomes a part of the issue. It, it, it's tough and I feel for Steve and for those of you that, that are backed up to it. It's nothing this council can do by themselves without your support, without your, not only contacting them, but contacting, continue to contact, um, your congressman, contact your state reps, and contact your, um, your county government. To get, it, it's going to take everybody coming together. I just won't come in here by themselves and do it. We've been working on this problem for, for a few years now and it's, it's disgusting.
It's two thousand nine, is it? I thought it was two thousand nine or when the first trailer came out.
When, when you see the, the stuff that goes on there, when you see the little teddy bears with the, with the diaper pulled down or with the tin shoes, with the shoes untied, the shoe strings untied, that's telling you there's either a boy or a girl in there that's used for sex trafficking. It, it's, it just, it saddens my heart when you see people and, you know, I, I grew up in Southern Cal, went to Tijuana a lot and saw people living in better conditions than what they're living there. When you've got pallets that are being used for them to sleep on and they're making two decks and maybe a piece of tin over the top of it, they're, they're using water containers to bring in their water because they have that. They're stealing outhouses from job sites, they're digging holes. When the floods come, there's nothing there, the sewer's all, the sewage is all over the ground. It, it, trust me, it, it's a bigger issue than, than this city council can do on its own. And it's gonna take your involvement to get it fixed. I'm sorry, I hate to be on the cell phones, but I just, it infuriates me incredibly that, that this, this continues on in Arden County and it's East County and the rest of the county doesn't get where we're at. We've got to stay on those. Sorry. Any other questions?
Yeah.
Yes, ma'am.
What's with the human trafficking you're talking about? This part, I've heard anything about that? Um, what did Ray get you to know about this? I've seen that one's been done about.
Yes, I, I sit on, on part of that organization. We have an organization in, um, in Houston, talking about the human trafficking as well, the pastors council that I'm on. It, it's alive and well. It has been addressed at a number of meetings with, with Congressman. Lenora Purvis can give you pictures and all kinds of information if you want to contact her. And, you know, it might be a good idea if, if city council would, would think about putting on, um, an information on, on King's Colony and letting you see some of the pictures that, that the chief has been out there and, uh, some of the things that, that are transpiring and find out some of the things that are actually taking place. And we've, there's, you can bring people, S. speakers that will tell you about. And I can't remember what the, the Spanish neighbor, Hispanic neighbor, Mexican neighbor.
Well, I haven't just been on the news.
For colonies.
You know, we all have kids out here.
They won't touch it.
There's one thing to...
Who you been to?
There's one thing to know somebody's guilty, there's another thing to prove.
So what was it? We all have kids and grandkids out here and I don't want my kid to disappear in the back of King's Colony and solve this sex labor. I mean, but I know we can use it and, and we'll just wind it down. This really makes everything lay in the corner while we do what's going on.
That's why we're starting to patrol around this area is to try to keep that, try to catch our way and get out of here. And we have, we've made a lot, we've made a big dent, but it's still...
Yes, ma'am.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, ma'am.
Um...
What?
First of all, I want to let, let everyone be aware that the city did not purchase all of the pictures in the room. Don't think your tax dollars are getting spent that way when there's other projects to do. My husband and I donated all these pictures. However, I do have a question for you guys. What makes me, why should I vote for you? Your number one reason, besides beautification? And why should I vote for you besides drainage, beautification? Besides drainage and beautification and roads, why should I vote for either one of you?
Police protection. Better police protection. Higher pay, pay, police protection. So you can feel safer for all of us. I have two girls, two young girls, sixteen and twelve. Um, I'm, just like this lady said, that was new to, that's new information to me, you know. I'm green. All these gentlemen here, um, was green at one time. They got involved in city council, they learned a lot, what's going on. I'm learning a lot myself and, um, and it's startling to hear what's going on back there. I never knew that myself. I want my girls to be safe. So if I can't, if I can't talk about beautification, I'll talk about office.
Re-read the question, what was the question? What was her question?
Well, why should I vote, why should I vote for you besides roads, infrastructure, beautification and additions?
You know, I've, I've, I've been through the battle. I've served on this council for the last four years. I've been through the regime change, the mayor changes, uh, I work good with this council. I'll be along good, uh, with the mayor and... Look at City Hall, I approve spending money for buildings that have, and, uh, beautification against...
I know he stole my book.
And I did pass, uh, to spend the money, I have a budget, a new budget, uh, for police, biggest police raises in Roman Forest history. So, and, uh, I'm on, I'm working with the chief of our office to, uh, get the entry level, uh, pay for officers to, uh, around twenty dollars. That's our goal next year.
Yes, ma'am.
I just, my question is, I've always felt like we all seem to be pretty much on the same wavelength when it comes to what needs to be done. I hear a lot of the same things and that's great. And I know I'm being just too few means, that that's hard, it's a politic, not everybody agrees. But is there anyone on board who checks into grants? Is there any, is that something, I mean, because here are cities all the time that have a lot of different grants. Is there someone who does that on our end? That, that's their job?
We've got the, the number one grant writer right there. He is the best grant writer.
And number two.
So is that, is that, is there progress with that? Is that helpful for us or?
It is. Most grants you got, uh, the thirty-three percent that you have to pay, um, but...
I was just wondering, you know, my experience, one of our biggest issues, I was just...
Can I, can I answer that? You know, we've done several grants through the improvement district and on that grant you have to match thirty-three percent. So since I started doing grants on the pool, they do grants twice a year. I have done a grant to Enset every single time except this last time because the last grant I asked for was a lot of money and I kind of got frowned on from the Enset board for asking for so much money. So I kind of gave them a break this time. I have been working with the Montgomery County Grant Administrator and for our law. But there's a grant administrator that is there at our disposal that looks for grants for us. She helped me with the Texas Parks and Wildlife grant to go after more park equipment as well as fitness equipment around the walking trail. She's also looking for a grant for us and I do have an email, I had a chance to look at it for, um, drainage. So that's through, uh, Texas Agriculture. And so that would probably be an even tougher grant to get. This last grant through Texas Parks and Wildlife, it took me about three weeks of nothing but working on that grant day and night. It get done because it takes so much, they ask so many questions. So yes, we are actively doing searching for grants to help, yes.
Well, I was just wondering if there was... But you're working hard.
And we are, yes, and we are receiving grants. So, yes.
Any further roads to Texas or the grant?
We're still looking for grants for that as well, but when you're talking about the drainage and the roads, you're talking about millions of dollars. You're not talking about a hundred thousand dollars. You're talking about millions of dollars and some grants you have to match fifty percent of. We don't have a half million dollars, you know, so we have to try to figure out what we can do to help raise some money to do that.
Well, I'd like to thank the candidates for coming out tonight. It's, it's, well, they've got closing statements still, but for, for, for going through this, it's, it's not easy sitting up here as a, as a candidate answering questions. It's almost like you're not under attack, but you kind of feel that way sometimes, but, um... Do you close? You start, who, who's who opened up? I can't tell you that. Tony opened up.
Yeah, Tony. I have one more question, this is for us. It's like the business has been with his, been on the council the last four years. Why are we sending our police officers into King's Colony in the state of the personal safety? Whenever we got the constable and county sheriff's office that had, actual had legal authority with that. I'm not even sure that our officers have legal authority. I just, I'd like to see. You know, and it seems like these are the only guys that respond and, you know. Are you asking a question yet for the other law enforcement?
Well, let me, let me address that one to the chief. That's, that's his line, you know. But I do know that, um, that the county has come out, the constable's office has come out and assisted at times. And yes, he has jurisdiction there.
The best, the best way to answer that, not getting negative or anything about it.
Short of manpower.
Would be, the sheriff department is primarily a reactive police department. They're going from call to call to call to call. We're a proactive police department. That's the benefit of being a city and having your own law enforcement. It is, we are proactive. We, we see the problem in advance and we run it out. So we have a little extra time. And when a call dispatches, we have an interlocal agreement with the county. They're busy going call to call to call to call and it's gonna take them three or four hours to get to the call. They just see that just to go ahead and dispatch us because we're right next door. And when we need help, it works the other way too. If we need help, if we need backup, they'll, they'll dispatch a Slendero unit or a county unit to come and help us. Or we all have one officer on duty and we take somebody in general, the county will come over here and run a call for us too. So we all help each other by contract or kind of obligated to each other.
And, 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 of course, if something bad happens, what's happening when you're, you know, you become disabled or something, they're gonna compensate you for the rest of your life?
We, we have insurance for that. Unfortunately, that's the risk that officers do take daily when they get out of bed in the morning.
Are you reimbursed for that time that we're out there doing that wall abuse chase with all those streets?
We are. Uh, when we're out on the traffic stop and we need help, they come and help us. When Slendero's out here helping us today because I'm short handed and I don't have anybody here, I don't have two, two old amount of officers to help with the crowd control or if they just get something out of hand. We have two Slendero officers over here to help us. If, uh, if it wasn't a national night out, I'd have a couple of constables over here to help us. We all help each other by contract actually. And the county dispatches us, they don't charge us a dime. If it would have cost, if we were to have a dispatch, it would cost us probably five or six employees round the clock to dispatch our officers. We just can't afford that. The sheriff department does that for us. So yes, we do get reimbursed for it by trade.
I, 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 I had discussed this before. I think what you guys, you don't have actual jurisdiction back there.
Yes.
Our limits on sport don't have jurisdiction back there, but I, I am, it is, we're all state of Texas police officers. Our commissioner through state of Texas handled by local authority. So if I was to write a ticket back there, you would go to Judge Metzger.
Okay, you close your session, Scott?
Well, I'd like to thank y'all once again for coming out, uh, doing this debate. I'm sorry if I felt kind of, I've been kind of nervous up here. I can give seventy man's safety meeting at work, but, uh, I ain't just, I ain't just nervous. Just want to touch on, I've been through the battle up here. I've, I've given the police raises, the biggest raise again, you know, in, in city Roman Forest history. And, uh, I approved grants for a swimming pool that is, uh, self-sustaining for the first time in history for the pool, I believe. We're not, we're not losing fifteen to eighteen thousand dollars a year anymore. And I appreciate you guys, but, you know, we're the fourth. Well, I, uh, you guys know why I want to get involved. Just to let you guys know, the police did get a raise, but they haven't got one in four years. Not even a three percent rate. It's been four years that they've gotten that they had got one. So they got a raise now. Thank you, city council, for approving that. You guys know where I stand. I, I want to clean the city up. I want to make it pretty. If we make it pretty, I think we'll get people coming in here, buy a house, buy a land. That's gonna bring our tax, tax base up. We'll have more money to spend. Get some back out of the seventies, build more police force up. That's really what I'm leaning toward. And of course, just like I said, I'm green. These guys have been in here. They was in my position at one time. They didn't know, they learned a lot. I'm willing to learn a lot. I'm a hands-on kind of guy. I will get out there and manually work with you guys. And spend your money correctly. As I said, I run my own business. Built out here in two thousand five, two thousand eleven, me and my wife, right here, we're debt free. From doing that, from me budgeting, me doing all the invoicing, paying the monthly bills, separating all my receipts from the year-end taxes. And, uh, just, I'm good with numbers. I'm good with money. I just put money where it needs to go to get the job done. As I said, you know, we're, we're debt free. She, she just stayed home alone. That gets, uh, some, uh, meals cooked. But, um, I'm just asking for your votes to clean the place up. I already, um, I've had me and my worker, we...
One minute.
We have, uh, we've done working here for free, never asked. I, I love working for you. And I want to make it nice. I want to make it beautiful. And I'm hoping, asking for your votes and, uh, all you have and Scott Bigger, I respect the guy, he's a good guy. We just have different, different, different visions and that's it. different visions, and that's it, other than that, he's great. Thank you.
I'd like to report a little bit on that, touch on that, not giving the police raises there for, you know, a couple of years, as Colin said, we just didn't have money on a budget, money wasn't there, Lloyd says it was there, but we studied that budget, we had budget meetings, after a budget meeting, you know yourself, money wasn't there, you know, we cut something and not had money for something else. We rolled over seven thousand dollars, air conditioning wasn't going out on the city hall, and we didn't, we didn't know if we were going to have money to fix it. And I just want you to know that these, we rolled over the first year with Mayor Ricks, ninety-eight thousand dollars, eighty-nine thousand dollars, police got a raise, biggest raise in history, so, good.
I'd like to thank y'all for coming tonight, I look for property and a house out of here Roman Force, and if I have any place to live in Montgomery County other than where I'm at now, is to be out here. I love the community, the people, the willingness of people, like telling me to be able to come out and help one another when the trees are down or whatever. I know that there's problems, I know that there's issues, but you've still got to be the best, the best, the best community in Montgomery County. Thanks for coming out, I beg you, stay involved, don't just show up for meetings like this, get with your city council members, show up for city council, talk to the commissioner's office, get involved and try to get these issues fixed. It's been a long time, they're not going, it's not going to happen overnight, you don't have the money to do it, just like Liz said, we're talking millions of dollars to redo things. I sat here and I listened to everything going on with the boulevard, with the widening and, and I was, my company and all of that that was going back and forth, it's, there's things you just can't fix that easy. So stay involved, early voting starts the twentieth, and I just ask for you to get out and vote, get your neighbors to vote, and remember that this is a nonpartisan race, so it's towards the bottom of the ballot, and, thank you.